Welcome to the town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, September 23rd, so we're going to begin. I'll ask our town clerk to call the roll.
Kelly Morrissey.
Here.
Christopher Pulis.
Here.
Michael Ricchio.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
John Berry.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi. Dawn Moselli.
Present.
Christopher Palmieri.
Here, and Councilman Lombardi reached out to me. He wishes he could be here this evening, but unfortunately, he was called away for work, so he's traveling and is unable to be with us this evening. So, he expresses his regrets for not being able to be here. Prayer.
I got it.
Okay, Councilwoman Morrissey.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Southington and her people.
Amen. Can I ask Councilman Dietzick to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
Moving on with our agenda, first item for action tonight is the minutes from the last meeting, just looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, one abstention. All right, and the minutes are passed. Moving on to councilperson communications. Mr. Ricchio.
I just wanted to point out, Mr. Palmieri, that one of your students was here that was gonna do the flag salute for you.
Oh.
Just kidding.
Oh.
She's here, I just wanted you to know that.
Thank you, I see her.
Maybe should we get extra credit? This, this, extra credit?
If you come again, I'll have you lead the flag salute. I didn't realize.
That would work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilperson communication?
I have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. First of all, I wanted to just say that the 9/11 ceremony that we had on September 11th in Plansville was quite moving. There were many first responders there, and the community really turned out, and it, it helps us remember. And so, I wanted to just say thank you for the folks that organized that, Mr. Mathau and others who were very much a part of it. The other thing I wanted to say is that I'm involved, I don't know how this all happened, but here I am. I'm involved in the precursor to our census. Everybody knows that this year, this coming year, 2020, we will, the census will be all over the United States, and we in Southington will also have the opportunity to be counted. And I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, it's very important, because so many things predicate itself on the number of folks that we have in Southington. We've sort of nicknamed it Southington Counts, and I'll be giving more information as I learn more and as, as we get closer to January. But there's a committee made up of department heads and citizens to help promote that we all get counted, and that we all participate in the census. The third thing I wanted to mention was that I had the opportunity to attend Parents University, even though I'm not a parent, but Saturday was Parents University, and it was a consortium between the STEPS program and the school system, and by the way, they thanked you very much because you allowing them to use DAPALO, and, and the police department were there. There were a variety of workshops that parents could go to. It ran from nine in the morning until little afternoon, and it was very well received, a lot of great effort. There were the Southington Drug Task Force, and the YMCA was there, and STEPS, of course, was recognized there. So, it was a wonderful day, and, and also very, very positive for parents, to give them concrete tools on how to raise our kids in this, in this very difficult time sometimes. And so, I wanted to just say thank you to STEPS, and to all of those, our police department, all those who participated. The last thing I wanted to do, just really in, I don't know if everyone received this, but there is a decorum of order at the town council level, and I just, you know, we are all, sometimes we all get a little hot or whatever, but I want to just read it into the record so that the public also can expect this from, from their council. And it says, "All members of the council shall accord the utmost courtesy to each other, to town employees, and to the qualified electors and taxpayers appearing before the council, and shall refrain at all times from rude derogatory remarks, reflections as to integrity, abusive comments, and statements as to motives and personalities." And so, you know, every once in a while, we all have to be reminded of that, and certainly I know I do, there are times when that Italian kicks in a little bit, I think, but, you know, it's always good to be reminded of that. And that's all I really had for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other counsel?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also attended the 9/11 ceremony that was held in downtown Plansville. The ceremony was very moving. The speeches by the town manager, the fire chief, the assistant police chief were really a reminder of how horrific that day was 18 years ago, and how it profoundly changed the way we, as Americans, live. It just reminds you of what a great country we have, and what a great community we have to have this annual reminder here in Southington. The organizer, Roger Mathau, did an outstanding job like he always does, and I hope many decades in the future that we continue to hold a ceremony like this, to remind people of what happened on that day. So, it was a very meaningful ceremony, it was very patriotic, it really reinforces what a great community we are, and how lucky we are to be Americans. So, thank you to all the volunteers and everyone that was involved in that.
Great. Any other councilperson communication?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Plumb.
I have a few things. First off, there's a few people in the audience from the Southington Historical Society. Hats off to your tag sale event on Saturday. I had the opportunity to get down there earlier, on the earlier side of the day, and it was perfect weather, sunny, perfect day, bustling crowd. I talked to some of our volunteers and some of our residents, and it was a great success, waiting to find out the actual success. But, I know that the Historical Society is looking forward to using the funds raised to put in a new floor in the lower level of that building. They really are delivering on their pledge to really upgrade that, that part of the building. It's a great, great improvement for our community. On their agenda, this, this is interesting. The society will have a team from Eastern Connecticut Paranormal Society. Come and investigate the growing number of unexplained paranormal activity. And then, they're gonna, after this investigation, they're going to do a presentation on October 30th, just before Halloween, this is, and they're gonna, an event called Exploring Evil. Location to be determined, we'll know once we get an idea of how many people. The facility can only accommodate a certain number of people, so it might have to be relocated. And lastly, on historical society front, they will continue to be selling their ornaments for the holiday season. Thursdays are open houses down at the Historical Society, from five to nine, you can, five to eight, you can pick up that, those things. One other, two more things. Saturday and Sunday, I actually have a, had a friend, and, who asked me to stop by Fancy Bagels, where the lady nights were there fundraising for their soccer program. And, they have these calendars. I bought one. My daughter took it away from me, because she wants to win the prize. But, for $10, there's a daily raffle in the month of October, and it goes a long way to support that group. They're really, really a great group of kids. And so, if you know a soccer player, or a soccer family, try to help support them. And lastly, I wanted to give an update on the Volunteer Fire Recruitment Committee, which met on September 12th. I have to say, it was quite a positive meeting. We went through a couple items that I'd like to report on. First was, there's, has been some website issues, and those were resolved. And, not only were, was the website resolved, and who was gonna fix it and so forth, the decision was made that the website would be managed jointly. The credentials would be shared between a volunteer and a career firefighter, which is, is a great way to have a collaborative movement in terms of how we're gonna recruit and retain our firefighters. We talked about social media, and how the different companies would utilize social media, and there was consensus that we would seek out training for members from each company to learn about, you know, social media management, and, and once trained, we would empower those volunteers from each of those companies, to have the autonomy to post, while being held accountable for the appropriateness of their posts. So, that too was a very positive step forward. We reviewed and discussed updates to recruitment cards. We have, we're just about at the point of having a finalized draft. It needs approval from the chief, but I have to tell you, the number of reply-alls in my town email about this card, from fire administration, career folks, volunteer folks, it was truly a collaborative effort to come out with a product that we're gonna use during the Apple Harvest Festival, to be able to hand out to people who are maybe new to town, or, or been here for a long time, and has just enough information to hook them into the inquiry of volunteering for our department. We talked about, not just recruitment in the fire department for volunteers, but retention. And one of the things that came up is the idea of giving volunteers that move on an exit interview, when they, when they leave the department. Now, what happens is, some people get like a full-time, career-paying job in a nearby town, and so, they leave on a very positive note. They've gotten great training and great experience as a volunteer, but they're moving on, and we want that feedback. And, and sometimes people leave on a less of a positive note. And both types of feedback is important when you make decisions about how to recruit. The nice thing about the decision we came to, which again, this is all, will be recommended to, to the fire administration, was that those exit interviews will be conducted with a volunteer and someone from the fire administration side by side. So, so that after the interview, they can collaboratively discuss how best to proceed in terms of future recruitment. And lastly, Al Urso had found a National Volunteer Firefighter Committee Organization, and, which offers departments many tools for recruitment and retention, to help departments recruit. And so, suggested we, we get a membership, and since the 12th, the chief has approved the membership, and we're now a part of that, that group. So, I can't say much more about how well this, this group of people worked together. There were eight, eight, eight or nine people there, really with a common purpose in mind, and looking forward to seeing the results of all this hard work.
That's great.
Right, Mr. Ricchio?
Yes, thanks. Just a last thing. So, on Sunday, I took a hike up to the top of the ridge over at Sloper's, and, actually, I saw you, Chris.
Saturday.
Sunday, Saturday. And, I just, I couldn't help but, so that was probably the second or third event that I was at, at Camp Sloper, that was not a YMCA-sponsored event. So, they were in some way, shape, or form, town-related, yours was public schools. And, I got to the ridge, I was just looking down, the whole property is amazing, and if you haven't gone on that hike, it's, it's spectacular from the rocks at the top. And I just thought, you know, we, I think, not we, but I think the town in general might take the YMCA for granted at times, and not realize the benefits just that one property alone gives to the town of Southington for events and/or outings. I think the other one was a cross-country event on Friday.
High school.
I think both of you guys were there. It is pretty spectacular, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to the YMCA, Mark Poole, all that John Myers did to, to bring the relationship closer together, and it's just a really shining example of public-private partnership that you can have in a community. And, you know, as far as open space goes, that's a serious amount of open space, with all kinds of added benefits that go along with it. So, just a little shout-out to the YMCA, that's all.
Great, they really do a tremendous job for our community. Thank you. Vice Chair Moselli.
Yes, speaking of open space, I'd like to invite everyone here on the dais, and also in the audience, and those watching at home, that this Saturday, September 28th, we will have a ribbon-cutting at our Novix Orchard Pollinator Garden. As you know, because I've mentioned it several times, over the last several months, because of a grant that we garnered from the Main Street Foundation, we were able to create a pollinator garden on our open space property on Flanders Road. It's been a lot of work for town staff, and, and for volunteers, members of the open space committee, so please join us this Saturday, 1 o'clock, September 28th, for that ribbon-cutting. And that will be the start, the official start of this pollinator pathway that we're doing in town as well, and we have, the brochures are in, and it's all very exciting. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? I just have a couple of quick things. First of all, the annual Red Ribbon Rally was announced, so that is October 17th on the town green, at 6:45 PM, so you can mark that in your calendars, everyone up here as well. I also wanted to share, I had the pleasure on September 13th of attending the Unico 75th Anniversary, along with our town manager, Councilwoman Triano, Vice Chair Moselli, and Councilman Pulis, and we had the pleasure of presenting them with a proclamation to honor their 75 years of service to members of our community. So, their motto is "Service Above Self," and they certainly have demonstrated that over the past 75 years, and here's to 75 more for Southington Unico.
Definitely.
And lastly, and I'll try to remind everyone at the end of the meeting, just to know, it will be three weeks till our next meeting because of the way the calendar falls, and it will fall on a Tuesday, which is October 15th, because Columbus Day is the 14th. That meeting will not be here. It'll take place in our old council chambers in the town hall. So, because it is a Tuesday, there's a planning and zoning.
Vintage, not old.
Vintage, in our vintage meeting.
Retro.
But, I guess it's still referred to as council chambers, so we're going back there as your town council.
Tuesday throwback.
Tuesday, October 15th, and that will be our next meeting. All right, so we're moving on now to the report of special committees. So, first of all, is a tax relief committee, and the chairman of that is here tonight, Mr. Jim Bose. Just to bring everyone up to speed, the, the committee, we did get, Mr. Bose did come to us, and we were very appreciative. He gave us a, an update of his committee's work up to a certain point, but we realized that due to state statute, we had to reappoint the committee in order to make some final suggestions, so that is why Mr. Bose is here tonight. And the charge of the committee was ultimately to look at what we can do, you know, members of the council, we all know, every year at budget time, we hear people on fixed incomes, they want to support services, but they can't afford it, so we were looking at residents in need, as well as veterans and senior citizens on a fixed income, and people with disabilities. So, with that, Chairman Bose, we'll turn it over to you.
Well, that was half of what I was gonna talk about, Mr. Chairman, so we're all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Yes, that was back in early July, and there was a, a provision of a state statute, which actually had this weird little provision in it that we were not aware of. And that was that the committee, once established, had to provide its finding for this one, these tax breaks, if you will, under one state statute within 60 days. We did not know that, so therefore, we had to go back and get reappointed, which you folks did, I believe, early July. So, so as to not regurgitate any of that, that's all included in, well, the recommendations are included in our town attorney's report, which will be presented a little bit later this evening. But the one thing that we did have to get to was Section 12-129, subsection N of the state statutes, which provides the municipalities in Connecticut the option of providing, which we might refer to as a tax freeze, for certain residents based upon age and/or whether or not they, they have a disability, a physical disability, as defined by Social Security. So, we met about that issue in late July, I believe I got all that stuff to Mr. Shoda in early August, and here we are to maybe just go over that one state statute, which is also in town attorney's report. And, Statute 12-129 is very similar to another state statute, which the town provides an ordinance for already. 12-170, subsection AA, I believe. The only, the primary difference is, if I'm off a subsection, I apologize, I've got it in my pack, and I can go get it, but, the primary difference being, the ordinance that the council adopted back in 2006, I believe, is age 70 or above. 12-179 actually lowers that to 65 or above. So, it could possibly provide some relief to, to folks who might need it, as well as to folks who are disabled, as defined under Social Security Administration law. 12-129 allows the town to impose a lien on the amount of the taxes frozen for each year that the person's taxes are frozen, for the incremental amounts each year. And, just going back and doing a little research on this, this was the item last time the council entertained, it wasn't, I don't believe it was his council, entertained something along those lines. It was recommended by the committee, and I believe voted on by the council, to not impose a lien on the amounts frozen. And that was petitioned for the referendum provisions of our town charter, and actually, your action, or this body's action, was, was rejected by the, by the citizens who voted that day. With that in mind, we, we sort of took that to heart a little bit, and when we, the committee comes forward with the recommendation on 12-129 tonight, again, as summarized as well in the town attorney's report a little later, what, the freeze amount will be leaned, under our recommendation, for two things, for two reasons. Number one, we sort of heard what the folks said last time. We don't want folks who severely need some, some assistance to be denied that because of doing the same thing again and failing again. So, we're, we're hoping that this, this meets everybody's approval and satisfaction. And the second thing is, I might be speaking a little bit for myself mostly here, this is a provision that the state statute tries to provide to help folks stay in their house a little bit longer. It's not to accumulate wealth. You know, there are other provisions that, that folks can use to accumulate wealth. And this way, when the property is sold or transferred, the citizens get their tax money back. And we thought that that's a pretty good deal. And I, I know there's three members of that committee here, Mr. Dietzick, Ms. Morrissey, Mrs. Morrissey, and Mr. Pulis. I hope, I always say your name wrong, Chris, I apologize. But, and I predict, we are all pretty much of that strong consensus. We also put some other provisions in there, which were allowed by the statute, to, the maximum tax benefit allowed per household to be $250. The reason why is because we're trying to reach more people at a specific targeted amount that would not, to not exceed $250,000. So, that's what we're setting the town's limit at, 250, we're recommending at least. Set the town's maximum tax loss, if you will, or tax sharing, because everybody else would be paying the taxes, at $250,000, maximized at 250 per household. If $250,000 is exceeded, then the assessor or other staff, under the finance director and under the town manager, will reduce that $250 on a pro-rata basis. Let's see. There will be no interest, according to the committee, our recommendation, to not charge interest on the leaned amount. The Statute 12-129 allows you to do that. We thought the interest portion, frankly, was a little bit punitive. The lien enough gets us our taxes back when that property is transferred, so that was our sort of mindset there. We also took advantage of a provision in the statute, which says, "The taxpayers shall live in that dwelling for at least one year prior to application, and must live in the dwelling for at least six months and one day each year that they apply. And taxpayers who owe any taxes to the town for this or any other property, except for those allowed by state statute in conjunction with this or any other state program, shall be ineligible for this benefit." That's basically what has been summarized by the town attorney, and it'll come to you tonight. And with that, I'll, I'll pause for questions or anything else. Mark Shoda told me I could take up to a half an hour, by the way.
Mike Ricchio gave you five minutes.
I said five minutes, but you know, he may have heard a half hour.
Then I think Mr. Ricchio corrected that to five minutes, so I'm, I'm trying to stay within those parameters, so, thank you.
And, and just for the public's sake, tonight on the agenda, we are taking action to set up public hearings, so we do want to hear from the public on the recommendations that Mr. Bose just suggested, as well, all the recommendations. So, we will, we will be setting a public hearing, we're not acting on the recommendations tonight. First, we're setting a public hearing. That way, there we give residents an opportunity to come forward and share with us what they think about the proposals. Councilwoman Morrissey?
So, what Mr. Bose just went through, we deliberated through for a long time, because as you can imagine, tax law is not easy. Think about when you do your taxes. So, I like to put everything as simply as I can, especially for the people that are going to try to take advantage of this. So, in the simplest terms I possibly can, the first item that we're talking about is for the permanently and totally disabled. So, we felt that they were a group of people in town that could use all the help that they could possibly get. What we're thinking, what we would like to do is allow them to have an additional $1,000 assessment exemption. So, not $1,000, but an assessment exemption, so their house would be assessed at $1,000 less. Right now, that statute is already $1,000. We would like to double it to $2,000. In doing so, right now, there are 176 applicants that take advantage of that. So, at most, we're looking at like a $5,000 impact, that would really help someone in need. That's the first item. The second item is a state-funded, that's the circuit breaker that Mr. Bose was referring to, is a state-funded tax break. We would like to increase those limits, meaning that if you're married, filing joint, or if you're single, instead of being $37,000, it's now $50,000. So, more people can take advantage of that, that tax law. In doing so, it, that's where they freeze their tax, their tax base. So, whatever their tax rate is right now on their house, that's what it would be until they sold the house, or passed away, or something happened that they no longer needed to live there and pay the tax. We would freeze that tax rate.
Or, or transferred it to a son, or a daughter, or grandchild.
And in addition, to ensure that the town would eventually get that tax money back, that's what the lien on the property is for. So, when that person does sell that home, the seller of the house would have to pay the lien on the house. So, that person can live there at this tax rate for the next 20 years, if that's how long they can live there. So, that allows just people to stay in their house longer. And the third, the third thing that we would like to do, most simply, is to give them a break, that those same group of people that are really low-income and 65 or older, give them a break on the taxes. So, in addition to having that lien on their house and being able to have that set tax rate, they can apply for an abatement, which gives them $250 a year, and that, we cap that, the whole town. So, however many applicants we get, no matter what, we're saying that the town is not gonna shell out more than $250,000 in the abatement. And that helps a wide range of people, because it's over 65, and then it's also the income, income limits. And this is comparable to a lot of the other towns that are surrounding us, so South Windsor is doing it, Farmington is doing it, and it's a statute that already exists, we just took it one step further, which is allowable, and says, okay, now you can increase it to however, you can offer this abatement. So, we don't have to offer it, but we can, and it helps those people in need. So, we, one, help the permanently disabled by giving them $1,000 exemption. We, two, increase the limits on who can apply for the freeze, and three, we give them an abatement. So, it kind of, you have three options, and we want more people to take advantage of this. Right now in town, the, on the lien option, there's only four people that take advantage of it. So, a lot of it is about education, which we got when we formed this committee, and what I think that the town needs in general, because there are a lot of people that can take advantage of it, that don't. So, if you know someone in need that could take advantage of that, tell them to reach out to the town or one of us, and we'd be happy to put them in touch with someone that can direct them on how they can apply for all of these, because it's out there and it's available to them.
Excuse me, Kel, you, how many people did you say were, were eligible, the disabled? You, you gave a number there.
That's who take advantage of it right now, it's 176 applicants.
Oh, I got it right, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Dietzick?
I'd just like to add something. So, just, you've heard references to state statutes, just give a little context. So, municipalities are creatures of state statute, they don't have their own power, their own sovereignty, so when you hear us reference of state statutes, the state really dictates the parameters and the methods we could use to reduce taxes. Personally, I don't think, I think we went as, we went as far as we could. Unfortunately, I think a lot of us would have liked to go on further, but we're truly limited by state statute. So, it's not us on this committee saying, oh, this is what we're gonna do. We did pretty much. We did pretty much every single thing we could have done allowable by state statute.
Yeah, I mentioned that when I came in July, that, you know, we, many folks are under the misconception that municipalities have any rights in the state. We basically, and Mr. Shoda would probably agree with, we really don't. Matter of fact, page one of the state constitution says, "The State of Connecticut and its 169 political subdivisions." Am I not correct, Mark?
Yeah.
So we are political subdivisions of the State of Connecticut. I have a boring life, I read these things sometimes, anyway.
Councilman Polus?
I just wanted to add, thanks for that summary, Mrs. Morrissey, that we did look at the veterans, the relief we apply, that we provide to veterans, and discovered that we, Sutherlandton has some of the highest income limits for veterans in the state. We're a leader in that area. We were very proud to find that out, and so.
That's correct, yes, we were.
That's awesome. Yeah, that's wonderful.
Okay, yes, vice chairman.
I'm curious, Jim, hello, thank you.
Hello.
I'm curious, because, did I see something in the paper a couple of weeks ago about the municipality of Wallingford, of which I know you are familiar, that they're doing something with regard to volunteer firefighters and their taxes? Are we doing all that we can with that contingent here in Sutherlandton?
Well, this committee, we weren't really charged with doing anything with regards to the volunteer fire or volunteer rescue. But just in a nutshell, in Wallingford, we're evaluating the entire compensation that volunteers receive. So that was one phase of it. So it's, you know, very short article, and it barely scratched the surface, but it's being looked at from a holistic point of view.
So maybe that's something that we can look at for all of our emergency personnel. You know, I know that you guys are just finishing your work, but, you know, maybe next time around, we can look at that.
Yeah, and the committee that was looking--
You all can look at that, I won't--
We have, we have an abatement program for taxes for volunteers. The question is--
I know that we have a tax reimbursement.
Exactly, that's the, it's an abatement program, but I do think that, it hasn't been looked at in many years, so that might be something we could take--
I would appreciate that, that'd be great.
And the committee that was looking into that, and Wallingford did not even have all of the compensation that some of our volunteer responders receive, because no one contacted us. I mean, so it was a, sort of an ad hoc committee, they meet several times a year, and they were gathering ideas together to go forward with. And then I think they're probably going to take a little back step, because they don't really know how much we do for volunteers, so, but, to be continued.
There you go, stay tuned.
Can I just ask a question? I'm not sure who to ask, somebody on the committee or you, Mr. Boes. So we're looking at raising the eligibility from $37,000 to $50,000. And that's per person, married?
Per household, yeah.
And a married figure?
It's a married figure.
What would be per person?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, that would be the projector, yeah.
Single, yep.
So, and do we know how many folks would be eligible, either married or single, to receive the frozen tax rate, please? And the lien on their house?
No, we don't, we didn't have any really, really hard numbers, but in dealing with Teresa Bab and our assessor, who was on the committee as a non-voting member, but obviously a very valuable one, she didn't think it was going to be as many as, that would give tremendous exposure to the municipality. Or, like I said, there really is no such thing as a tax loss. I mean, it's, everybody else kind of pays a little bit more. Actually, so does that person. If you, if that person gets his or her taxes reduced, her mill rate goes up to pay for some of that. So it's sort of like, you know, the dog chasing his own tail. But, yeah, I believe at the time, hopefully this census, you had mentioned it before, will have a better and a more current breakdown by income.
In your presentation, she does have financial impacts. If you, in the presentation that was--
Yeah, we had done, we had done an early view of it, but in changing some of the, some of the income levels and some of the provisions, we weren't exactly sure where we were going to end up. So, you actually need about a year of experience to, before you can really bring that home.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, for Mrs. Triano, what we aimed to do was, our income limits were really out of date. And the first thing we did was, we said, let's bring them to like the circuit breaker levels. Then we did a study of like neighboring similar type communities and said, well, cost of living in Sutherlandton's slightly higher, so we're going to do what the circuit breaker limit is, plus $7,000, as a means to keep people in their houses, because it costs a little bit more to live in Sutherlandton. So that's where we come up with the $50,900 for married and the $43,000 for single. These programs are things people apply for. So the only data we have are the people that are currently applied under the smaller income limits. Now that the eligibility is broader, we're going to have to wait and see who's motivated, who now, there's more qualified people based on what they make, and who wants to go and sign up for that. Some people don't want to get into a tax relief program with a lien. The important thing is, we have programs with liens and without. So we have a nice blend. And like Mr. Boes said, we thought that that was the fiscally responsibility, responsible way to go forward by offering a blend, and people can choose to opt in on some of these other programs.
And the town's also covered a bit, because we have the cap, like we are suggesting no more than $250,000. So you could have a million applicants, but as soon as $250,000 is gone, it's gone.
I just wanted to say, I think it's important for us to get a hand on what the exposure is. I do understand the cap, and I think that that's, that's a little bit of insurance for the community, and I think that's good. But I would like to know a little bit more. And we have time, because we're going to have a public hearing on this.
I would just say that this, the document I sent to you was the, was the presentation that our director did in front of the Board of Finance, and one of their biggest questions was that. So if you look at it, you're going to see impacts of each one. No, you'll have to do it tonight, but obviously if you take a look at it, you'll see the impacts for each one of the programs.
Very good, thank you.
So the way this committee was set up, there were two members of the Board of Finance on this committee as well, just to make sure the Board of Finance had representation. Because the Board of Education is such a large part of our budget, we had a representative from the Board of Education on the committee as well. And I do also want to, you mentioned her already, but I want to thank our two staff members, Teresa Babin served on this, but also Janet Mellon, because we know that--
Absolutely.
Janet does a phenomenal job with our most needy in town, and we needed to make sure she had a voice as well.
They had significant input with the committee, and they're, I mean, Janet, like you said, is on the front lines with folks. And of course Teresa, being the technical person involved, yeah, they were invaluable to us, yeah.
Great. So thank you, Mr. Boes, and your committee members that are here tonight, as well as the rest of your committee. And as I mentioned, it is, this is on the agenda tonight. We'll hear a little bit from the town attorney with her recommendation, but then we're going to take action later tonight to set a public hearing. And then at that time, after we hear from the public, then we make a decision on what to do. Any last questions for Mr. Boes?
No, just thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think, I think we all learned a little something. Everybody on the committee did, and it was--
Absolutely.
It was a great working committee, too. You folks, I know, appointed us. Your selections were, with the exception of me probably, were very good. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, it's funny you say that. Mr. Boes qualifications is a finance director in Wallingford and the former finance director in our town. So he really had extensive background to add to this committee. So thank you, Mr. Boes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on. The only other committee tonight, I don't know where the year has gone, but it is apple harvest season. So just to give an update from the apple harvest festival committee, we did have a meeting last week. I do want to take a minute and recognize, first of all, our sponsors that have contributed financially to the success for this festival, and I'd like to name them and just give them a little kudos. So our bronze sponsors this year are BL Companies, Comprehensive Orthopedics, Chilcon, Gabriella Truck Sales, Granite Inliner, People's United Bank, Colite Family Dentistry, Harvard Healthcare, Tie &amp; Bond, Liberty Bank, Walmart and Wheeler Clinic, and those are the bronze sponsors. Our silver sponsors this year are AT&amp;T, Care Partners of Connecticut, Courtyard by Marriott, Goostown Communications, the Rea Clinic, the Sutherlandton Observer, and Nanfido Roofing and Siding. We have three gold sponsors this year, thank you to Coca-Cola, Price Chopper and Realized Solutions. And we have three platinum sponsors. So I'd like to acknowledge and thank AMR, Eden in Maine, and Bristol Health. So again, we appreciate all their financial support to help the festival, and some of them are sponsoring specific events, and you'll be able to see them at the festival. This week, this Thursday, is our annual gala, where we really honor our hosts and hostesses. And we will name our queen for this year's festival at that event, so that is this Thursday. If you are still interested in attending, you can contact Dave Lepre in the recreation office for tickets. But we're looking forward to a great kickoff to the festival. I'd also like to just acknowledge and thank some of the committee members that are volunteering their time to serve the festival. So the supervisory committee, Mr. Lombardi serves as the vice chair, he is, as I mentioned, not able to be here tonight. Committee members Jack Perry, Julie Portfolio, Mark Shoda, Kate Sergnano, Annette Turnquist, and Lieutenant Steve Elliott is our liaison with the police department. I'd like to acknowledge Melissa Kozza, who's our sponsorship coordinator, who's going out and soliciting all these sponsorships for us. And our assistant festival coordinator is Julia Baradnelli, who really did a phenomenal job, as well as Dave Lepre, who's our festival coordinator. As you may know, this is the first year that our recreation department has taken on running the actual festival, and we've seen really a synergy between the town departments with them being a part of the organization of the event. Some other committee members that are volunteering, thank you to Denise Johnson, Nino Macagnan, Eric Edward Pocock Jr., Donna Solis, Pam Standforth, Susan Zoney, Erin Bard, Jody Lepre, Tony Savino, George Newton, Carl Carlon, Joe Ceruti, Dave Zoney, Jerry Limer, Joe Materano, Paul Champagne, John Vey, John Atasian, Heidi Bass-Lamberto, Tony Lamberto, and Lucy Leach, for all their efforts leading up to the festival. And of course, we have hundreds of other volunteers that are, that are going to be on festival grounds over the two weekends. I'd also like to thank the United Way and the Sutherlandton Chamber of Commerce for helping us out with soliciting volunteers to help man our beverage booths this year. And as I've always said, this festival is the success that it is because of the efforts of volunteers and people contributing to the festival. And it don't just mean people volunteering for the festival itself, but all our civic groups that spend their time and efforts at the festival over the two weekends, investing in our community and in taking that money that they raised there and giving it back throughout the year, not just over the two weekends. We see that in scholarships and charitable donations given really throughout the year. So please, come on down and check out the festival. Just another reminder, our headliner this year, we started last year bringing in a national act. So those of you that are 90's rock band fans, we are bringing in the 90's rock band Spin Doctors. So they will be on the main stage on Saturday, October 12th at 7:45 PM. And we also brought back our laser light show, which was in addition at the 50th anniversary event. And of course, the fireworks, which are a favorite, are October 5th, and our parade is Sunday, October 6th. So I think we've got a great festival planned. Now we just need weather like we've had last, this past weekend and today even, so as long as we have that, we're in fantastic shape. Any, any questions leading up to the festival? Okay, so moving on to the town manager's report and communications, Mr. Shoda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first time I have is the Board of Finance, we had a very routine meeting. Obviously, it's only the second meeting of the new fiscal year. The action of major consequence was the Board of Finance unanimously recommended to you the recommendations of the tax relief committee. So I went to them for the financial aspect of it, and Teresa put a presentation on with them, and of course, they gave you a unanimous recommendation on that. Any questions? Okay, the next item, and I know that Tom's not here, because I informed him we were going to have the presentation that he thought we certainly needed with the new energy consultant. And I know Tom will watch it on tape. So first, let me introduce our superintendent of Highway Parks, Annette Turnquist, who will introduce the, our new energy consultant.
I'm Annette Turnquist, I'm the superintendent of Highway Parks. I've been working closely with our new energy consultants, Alberio Energy, we had a name change, but it's now Alberio. I'm going to introduce you to Rudy. I'm not going to attempt his last name, because I will destroy it, I'm going to leave that up to him. But Rudy, if you want to come on up. Okay, you set up here.
My name is Rudy Miklasvari. And it is a little bit of a mouthful of a last name. But I'm with Alberio Energy, and I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing for the town, and more importantly, what the town has been doing for itself for the last couple of years. We came on as your energy consultant in, was it April? We started, so really what we've done is inherit a lot of the work that your previous consultant has been doing, and will endeavor to continue all of the good stuff. But let me start with telling you a little bit about who we are and what we do. So we are one of the, we are the largest independent buildings, controls, installer and service company in the country. So we work with over 5,000 different organizations. We install everything from a honeywell to a JCI to train. Any building control system that you may have in any building, we have experience doing it. We have customers from the largest that you can imagine, to the smallest that you can imagine. I work in our energy management division, which is, we specialize in energy procurement. So how you buy your energy is a big component of what we do every day, and we're helping the town to make sure that you're buying your energy in the most effective way possible. When we think of a building, there's lots of different moving parts in a building. And today, we had a wonderful day, it was beautiful, was it 90 degrees up here? I live just, just north of New York City, it was 91 down there. But what this means for our town budgets is, when we have a day like today, and we have air conditioning load in a building that you wouldn't necessarily have at the latter end of September, often, that's where your energy budgets can start to shift and sway. Typically, in the dead of winter or the heat of summer, your energy is pretty constant. You know that you need to cool in the middle of summer, and you know that you need to heat in the middle of winter. But it's in these shoulder seasons where we see, often there's a lot of opportunity for savings, and often there's a lot of opportunity for budgets to go awry, because all of a sudden, we had a snowfall in May, or we had 90-degree weather in the end of, at the end of September. What we talk about at Alberio is, we want to deliver mutually beneficial outcomes to our customers. Alberio, the name Alberio is, comes from this, this Alberio star, which is a partnering star. So we view every one of our customers as a partner in our journey of managing your energy more efficiency, more efficiently. And ultimately, what we're looking for is sustainable energy management and sustainable savings in the long term. So what's the town been doing for the last little while? And I think that the most important thing is that Annette and all of the different entities within the town have been working with energy consultants to help get the advice and guidance on how you're procuring your energy and what decisions you're making about your energy management. So working with a consultant is the first thing, that's what we do day in, day out. Secondly, you've put a lot of solar generation into, into the town. You've got five different sites and a total of about 1.4 megawatts of solar generation. So I don't know what everyone knows about the impact of generating your own, your own power, but effectively what you're doing by investing in these solar generating assets is you're hedging your price over a much longer term, because you're, you're generating your own electricity, you're putting that back into the grid, and it is a form of hedging, hedging your energy. You have a food-to-waste energy program that's performing as expected. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail into these programs, because these programs were set up by my predecessor. And you've also gone through a detailed level of energy conservation measures across 30 of your facilities. There is a audit report on those facilities that is undergoing for this, it's the second year now, I believe, or the third, the third year now, which should be coming out in the next month, maybe two. But we reviewed the most recent level of those reports, and all of these ECMs that were expected are delivering. So you're, you're well on track there. And you're looking at a fuel cell in your waste pollution control. So what's next? The big thing that I'm thinking about is looking at all of the supply contracts that you have in place today. So in deregulated markets, and Connecticut is a deregulated market, you have the opportunity to go out to independent suppliers of energy to buy the commodity that you're using. If I can explain it from a layman's term, the commodity, the supply is one side of your energy bill, and the transmission and distribution is the other side of your energy bill. It's delivered by the utility. You cannot do anything with the transmission and distribution. You cannot do anything with the transmission and distribution. That's the infrastructure that the utility owns. It's the copper that delivers the power to every facility in the town. But the commodity itself, the supply, whether it's a kilowatt hour of electricity, or it's a therm of natural gas, you can do things and buy them more efficiently. And that's why the town's working with a consultant like us to help you make the right decisions around buying the commodity that you use to run your facilities. Currently, you're in long-term supply agreements, and we're evaluating all of those agreements. Those agreements expire in November of 2021, and we're looking at what the options are for current market conditions. Are you in the best deal that you possibly can to make sure that the town is using your capital resources as most efficiently as possible? A big part of what we deliver the town is tracking all of your energy use and collecting all of your bills and putting them into a technology product that we call Utility Module. And this is available to all of the town entities, and it helps the town more effectively budget and forecast your budget. So we've just been working with each entity over the last couple of months as you're going into your new fiscal year, so that you can start setting these fiscal budgets. Our tool, as it collects more data and more data, becomes more efficient every month. So as we get through another year and we have more accurate reporting, this budgeting becomes more and more valuable to you over time. So as we get into the fiscal cycle for next year, that all of the town managers, the different entities within the town have access to this to be able to forecast more efficiently how much energy did you use in the last year, what's the forecast season ahead, and what's the budget forecast, so that you have a much better idea of what that line item expense is on your annual budget. We're evaluating a solar generation at the Calendar House, which will add another 350 kilowatt hours to your generation assets, and we're looking to confirm the fuel cell at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Lastly, we're looking at opportunities to drive additional energy conservation measures across different facilities. So whether this would be further retrofitting, looking at control adjustments, or other types of measures that we can try to eke out other savings in how you're using your So that's it for me for now. I wanted to open up for questions.
Mr. Ricchio.
I have a couple of questions. So the first being, I might maybe go through Mark on this one. Where are we on the landfill on Old Turnpike Road as far as using that land for solar?
I could briefly tell you where we are. As you know, the town owns one parcel, the federal government and state of Connecticut own the other. I know that Marty Boer, who is our environmental attorney, has been working with the other attorneys on it. But as sometimes environmental attorneys, they're very, very cautious, and the town is certainly not going to be in the position to take 100% liability of that land in exchange for them allowing us to put anything there. So that's still ongoing. It hasn't been, we didn't put up the white flag on it yet, but that's still ongoing.
I have several questions. If I can wait. So the next one would be, what, other than the Calendar House, because that's already been on the table, what else would you guys be proposing? And is solar net metering and all that still a viable option?
Net metering is a viable option, and really, as far as solar, I mean, any time that you can look at generating solar, whether it's existing land or buying other land or looking on rooftops, it makes sense to do, long-term. So the more that you generate your own power, you control your own power generation, you're effectively using that as a hedging strategy, similar to what we're doing with putting you into long-term supply contracts. So think of any solar generation or any other renewable generation as a part of your hedging strategy. What you end up doing is getting into a long-term contract for the generating asset, which fixes your price over time.
So, you know, this roof on this building is not that old. The high school has a brand-new roof on it. Middle schools, do those have solar?
Both have it.
So those have solar. The Calendar House, I mean, we have a lot of new roofs and a lot of new buildings, and if we can get the similar arrangement that we got on the schools, I don't see why we're like waiting. Let's just get going. I mean, and I would hope that you guys are pushing that. That was my comment. And then my last question, based on your experience as far as municipalities go, where does Southington fall as far as being in the forefront of energy consumption?
Management.
Everything.
Everything. So you guys are a leader.
Good.
Absolutely. Because the first thing, from a municipality perspective, you're doing something about it. You've been engaging and working with a consultant who's an expert in it, and you're continuing to do that. So that's number one. Number two, you're always asking questions about what can you do, your questions about solar. That makes a lot of sense. You've got assets in the field. You want to expand those assets, yes. You're definitely a leader as far as municipalities.
Okay, that's good. I think we just should push forward. I know putting the solar on the ground has been controversial, but we have a lot of rooftops.
Just to take that one step further, Vicki and I serve on the High School Roof Building Committee, and I don't remember whether we talked about it here or there, but, and I did mention it to the manager, I think, last week, but that's an area with a brand-new roof that's a perfect candidate for solar panels. So that's something, hopefully, we can work with the Board of Education.
Exactly. The point here is working with the Board of Education. This is a joint contract, just so I want everyone to know. The Board of Education and the town, once again, pooled up resources to hire one Energy Consultant, because obviously, we're one town.
And the Water Department.
And the Water Department, excuse me, thank you. So in this particular case, I did broach the issue with Mr. Romano. He'll bring it up through his chain of command. But I did want to take a little different tact. I wanted to have the Board of Education make the decision first, and then we'll take it from there when it comes to the high school roof, because as you know, we're just in step one of the high school roof. This was one section. So there may be reasons why we don't do it immediately, but once again, I take no assumptions here, but assuming the voters give us the ability to purchase this building in November, certainly, Mr. Ricchio, this would be one of the buildings we'd look at, but certainly, I take no assumptions by starting the plan as of this moment. I'll wait until, see what the public tells us.
Thank you.
And Calendar House, we already took up on this.
It's already starting.
You know, I was thinking, Don, like, the Drive-In Theater has a massive roof that might sustain the power bill for that. I mean, they're everywhere. We have buildings all over the place, so I would just get going.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I don't believe that, because you're recent in taking over all of this, I'm really interested in the current actual cost savings to Southington. And I don't know if, Annette, if you get that information, or, but I think it's really important for us to see where we are in the actual cost savings since we've initiated the solar panels and the waste-to-energy stuff. So I'm really kind of interested in that, and I'm not sure where to go to get that information. We were getting that information from the last company periodically.
So there's an audit going on with all of the energy conservation measures, and that will be forthcoming. That will give you a very good idea of how those initiatives are performing, and are they delivering the cost savings that you're expecting? Asking and answering the question of what are the cost savings is, as an Energy Consultant, it's, and I'm going to be completely honest with you, it's very difficult to answer. And I would also say that if you have a consultant standing up here and saying, "I will guarantee you these cost savings," that you shouldn't believe them, because cost savings and energy markets are changing all the time. So if I was an investor and investing in an equity stock, and I said, "Well, you know, what was my saving by buying it through X broker versus buying it through Y broker?" Well, it really depended on what time you bought, where the market was. Energy is the same. Energy is going up and down all the time. So it's very difficult to say, "Hey, the town's savings are X," because it depends against what benchmark you have.
And does that also include the actual energy saving as well? Does that fluctuate as well, how well we're doing with direct energy savings?
Correct.
Okay.
It does. So, and also, you've got a variable that changes your energy consumption every day. So if we sat down at a budget meeting in May and said, "You know what? By the time we get to the end of September, it's going to be cool, we're going to have 50-degree nights, and we're going to have 60-degree days, and we're not going to need any air conditioning." But what did we need today? Right? So we, so again, looking at cost savings, it's very difficult. Then we start to layer on top of this and say, "Well, in this world of climate change and big natural events that are happening, how do we forecast for those? We simply can't." So it's really difficult for me to say, "Well, hey, these are the cost savings you're getting," because, well, six months ago, I didn't know that we're going to have 90 degrees today.
I think it's just, whenever you have a governing body, you want the black and the white.
You want hard and fast numbers, I get it.
More of a concept and a commitment to making us greener and greener, to reduce our carbon footprint and to make ourselves as self-sustaining as we can with these initiatives. And so I do accept what you're saying, but there's part of me that says, "Yeah, but what's the bottom line?" But I'll get over that as years go on.
So a big part of the bottom line is what are you doing? Right? So what you're doing is you're bringing me to a town council meeting and talking about these initiatives. You're evaluating additional solar initiatives. You've got contracts in place so that you're buying as effectively as you can. You and the town council can't control where energy markets are going. So we can't control what's happening to the climate, but we can control the decisions that we're making, and that's exactly what you're doing here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Morrissey.
So you talked a lot about buying commodities at the right time. Do we, as a town, have the ability to sell the commodity? So as we produce solar energy in a time in the market where they're selling energy at a very high rate on the grid, can we sell back to the grid and actually make money instead of saving money where we can make more than we save?
It doesn't work quite like you would think it would. One of the unique things about electricity is electricity cannot be stored at mass scale. So when you have a generating asset like a solar field, what's happening with that generating asset is it's putting its generation back into the grid. So that solar field you have contracted, you set the price of what you're generating and you're putting it back into the grid. So you can't say, "Hey, I'm not going to put it back into the grid until 3 o'clock in the afternoon in August, because that's when it's going to be worth the most." So it has to be going back in all the time.
And you can't produce more than you can use.
You can't produce more than you can use in one sense, but you can store some of what you're using. So starting to think about fuel cells or large-scale battery deployment. So on the other side of your equation is, well, if we can't dictate what we, the price that we're selling it back into the grid, but we can control when we pull it out of the grid, so being able to store it, and instead of pulling your electricity out of the grid at peak hours, you can put it into a battery or into a fuel cell, and that's what we call peak-load shaving. So instead of buying it from the grid, well, we generated it, we put it into a battery, and so we can take, you know, 100 kilowatts or a megawatt off our load and run our building during that peak time, so we're not pulling it or buying at the highest price from the grid.
Very interesting.
Any other questions?
And we'll be coming to you in the next couple of meetings with that fuel cell at the Water Pollution Control Facility.
Okay. Thank you for your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? If there's no other questions on that, the next item we have is the Library Architect, and we have the Chairman of the Library Board here to give a brief presentation.
Great. So as Mr. Curtis is making his way up, I'd also like to acknowledge Walter Grover, who's the Vice Chair, and I see members Heidi Bittner, Joanne Kelleher, Val DiPaolo, Jennifer McCaughy. Did I miss anyone? Okay. And of course, our Executive Director, Kristi, is here as well. So thank you all for being here this evening, and with that, we'll turn it over to your Chair, Mr. Curtis.
Would anybody like a printed copy of the packet?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for, Mr. Chairman, for having me back here. I just want to start by talking a little bit about how important, I think, collaboration is to this process here. This idea of either renovating or building a new library has sort of been out there for years, actually, ever since I've been on the Library Board, and I'm told before that. But I think for a lot of that time, it just sort of existed among the Library Board members. It wasn't really a project that was in the public spotlight at all. And so I think it's very important, because the library is one of the few facilities in town where everybody can use it, everybody's welcome, that as many voices as possible are involved in the process. And so a couple of years ago, the Library Board started what we call our Library Advocacy Committee. The goal is to just tell the town and everybody what exactly our library can offer. There's so many great programs offered at the library. There's so many digital technologies that people have access to now. And that committee helped facilitate programs and going around to different town organizations to promote the library. We visited schools for open houses. And then when this project started to develop a little bit more, the Library Board knew that we needed people who knew about building projects. And so we started our Planning Committee, and we brought in people who had worked with referendums in the past, who had built buildings, people who were experts with libraries, because the more voices and more experiences we have in this process, I think, the better the outcome. And then in August, we came here with a recommendation, and that was your turn to get involved in the process. And you offered a lot of feedback in that August meeting. I want you to know, I appreciate all the feedback that you gave. You all have a lot of experience that is very helpful in this process. And so after hearing your comments and speaking to some of you, we reconvened the Planning Committee, because we wanted to dig a little bit deeper into some of the architectural firms we had interviewed back over the summer. And we had some unanswered questions, and that committee came away with another recommendation, and we took that to the Library Board. And at the last Library Board meeting, the Library Board voted to recommend the architectural firm of Tape Architects from Boston to create the concept plans for a new library. And I just, we'll talk a little bit briefly, you know, I sent out the packet of information to you. I think their record of work speaks for itself. They are a very impressive firm. They've worked on more than 90 library projects. The primary person we'll be working with, with Tape is a guy named Jeffrey Hoover. He's a fascinating gentleman. He teaches a class at Harvard Graduate School. I think after our initial interview with Tape, a lot of the comments were that this is the type of guy you just want to sit down with and talk about libraries with. He's so passionate about his work. He has such immense knowledge about what works with libraries, what doesn't work. They have done projects all over the Northeast, I think as far south as Virginia. They just finished a project over the summer in Keene, New Hampshire, and they've won numerous awards for their work over the years. So I guess one question, or I figured you might have, is why didn't we come to you with them as a choice in August? And really, there were two things that concerned us in the beginning. One was distance, because they are out of Boston. We were concerned that, how accessible would they be? And so we reached out to the firm, we, you know, they have been doing for years projects all over the place. And with this last project in New Hampshire, which is about the same distance away from Boston as Southington is, Mr. Hoover was able to go to about 95% of the meeting. So he has assured us that he is hands-on, that he is present, that he will make himself available to us whenever we need it. In fact, when we reached out to him as a committee, he was available by phone, answered all our questions without any reservation. So I was very happy with that. The other thing, and this was a concern I had, looking at a lot of their plans for other libraries, they were very modern. Those were some of the projects that they chose to share with us at that committee meeting. So we dug a little deeper into their projects, and we saw all types of designs. There were some that were very traditional, that would very nicely fit in with downtown Southington. There were some that were more modern, and there were lots that very much blended the two styles. And so having And so having so many buildings that they've constructed over the years and different types of projects, I think that, I'm very confident they will be able to design something that's special for Southington. One of the things that really impressed us from the start with them is their ability to sell a project to the community. And by sell, I mean not convince us we need a library or anything that, but to really work with the town, work with the community to get input from all segments of the population and to really incorporate into that, into the design. They showed us one thing where they do, where they map the current building that we have, and they ask people to walk through or draw how they would walk through the library, how they would use it. And then they use that data that they collect to actually design the new building. Because you want a building that people can use in a very efficient way. And so that was just one of the various things that they'll do. So I'm very confident in this firm. I think they will produce some really great work for us. Collaboration is very important, as I said at the beginning. And once we get an architect in place, the next phase is for that architect to go out into the community, to begin that interaction, involve all the different groups, and to design something that everybody can be not just comfortable with. I don't think this is a project that we just need to get people on board with. I want this library project to be something that Southington can be excited about, something that we're all energized and that is really going to be a gem for our town. So I think this architect will be a good start with that. So I want to thank everybody that served on committees for the Library Board, and I want to thank all the library staff who helped with this. It's been a great process, and I thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I may be able to answer them.
Councilwoman Morrissey?
So I have one. So I have no doubt that the architect is fabulous. I mean, they have a great reputation, but an architect is only as good as the direction that they've been given. So I do have a couple of questions. So the proposal that you gave, they break out the cost for conceptual design and cost estimate. There is a big difference for architecture when it comes to, are you refabricating an existing building or are you building new? Have we given them a clear direction as to which way we're going?
I don't know that. I've decided one way or the other. I've, I think that a new construction might be the cheapest way to go, or not cheapest, but the most cost-effective way to go when you incorporate, you know, environmental costs and things like that. But I think part of what they will do is look at the old building and see if it can be salvaged. You know, it is an old building, but...
I feel like that might be something that needs to be predetermined, like we want something new or we want you to fabricate. Because I feel like they will do what we want them to do because that's what they're being hired for. So unless we tell them what we want, that kind of leaves them at an impasse. I also am curious, have we told them what level to design to? So as an architect, I'm sure they could design a library worth $30 million. We as a community aren't prepared to spend $30 million, so we need to give them a target to shoot for because they can still design something very nice, but we just need to provide them with that direction. Has that been done?
We, that was one of the questions we asked when we reached back out to Tapepe and talked to Mr. Hoover, and he said that that's what they do. They work with municipalities, they get a number, and they build to that number. They don't, you know, put in extra stuff, or it's not necessarily, you know, here's all the things you can have, and then you got to pull out. They will, if there's a number in place, that's what they'll work within. So he made that assurance to us.
Have we decided on a number yet?
I don't think that's my decision to make, but...
How do we come up with a number? I feel like the community should be aware of that.
Just to jump in there, I think the proper way to handle this is to do a needs assessment on what are the needs? And I wish we almost had a new, different name for a library, because I think in people's minds, you're going to go in and get books that really don't exist anymore. And if you go to a library like Wallingford is the closest example, you can see that it's just not books anymore. It's really an interactive space that we don't have in Southington. So I think first they would do a needs assessment on what are the programs that would be incorporated into this building that the community wants and/or needs, and then what size is needed to accommodate those. And then from there, look at the old building. They have to do an assessment on that old building to see if that building is viable to keep or not. And then they should make a recommendation to us as to, based on cost, what do we do? Do we renovate? Do we build new, tear it down? I think we need to rely on them because they're the professionals. That's why we're hiring them to do that.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that is exactly the procedure we followed at the Calendar House. We had the architects come on board, meet with the committee, find out what the desires of the committee are. Then the architect will look at the existing building. In the Calendar House, the situation was pretty easy. Within 15 seconds, they decided we couldn't save that building, but, you know, they maybe talk about that. But what Mr. Riquel just talked about is the procedure we followed with the Calendar House, and we also follow with schools. There's a need assessment done. And the need assessment comes from you and the staff. That's how it works. And then preliminary schematics, by that I mean to work up what that cost is, what your need study is. And we did it with the Calendar House, if I remember correctly. We were given a preliminary presentation for the Calendar House and what the numbers were. So follow that particular guidelines, and that's, I'm sure, what the architect has done on numerous occasions with the municipality. So I feel confident that once the Library Board, as well as the staff, talk about what the needs are of the new media building, library, whatever you want to call it, then the process begins. And we do the same thing with the schools. Mr. Palmer and I worked on several building committees, the same thing happens.
And just to respond, Councilwoman Morrissey, as well, thinking about the Calendar House, reflecting back when we went through that process, it comes down to wants versus needs. So for example, I remember in one of the plans, it was a pool, for example. That wasn't necessarily a need. It was, it would have been nice to have that, but that was really value-engineered, if you will, out in order to be cost-effective to the residents. Yet still, that building is a phenomenal asset to the town. So I think, you know, we'll have that opportunity as we progress along the way, and we'll be, you know, the council will be a part of that discussion as well.
I just want to make sure we have the opportunity to look at all the options, to make sure that we present to the community something that we think will pass, because a new library is needed and, you know, valued in the community, but we want to make sure that it passes. So looking at it the first time to get it to go through is essential.
Okay. Vice Chair Misselli?
Okay. So a couple of things. First off, I just want to say, some of us antiquated people still do go to the library for books, by the way, and that's me. And by the way, mine are always overdue, so I'm always paying my fines, which is a positive because it all goes into the revenue stream and whatnot. A couple of things with regard to some of the conversation right now. I think that the Tapepe letter back to your committee was quite detailed in that it talks about the fact that they'll be working with structural engineers, building for suitability for reuse. So obviously, they're going to look at whether that building, and that's probably the first thing that they will do. And then it also, under conceptual design, talks about creating conceptual design options for renovation and addition and for new construction. Sounds like you're going to get a couple of options once they get in there and sort of do some analysis and whatnot. I guess my biggest piece of advice, I'm not sure that I'll still be on the council, well, I know I won't be after November, so moving forward with this is stay in touch with the people on this dais, because if there was one thing that I think was learned the last go-around, was that the council didn't seem to have a lot of, we didn't have cognizance of what was going on. So then when all of a sudden, we were presented with a schematic, some of us were overwhelmed at what we took in.
Mr. Riquel?
Yeah, just a comment, because I will not be here when this all goes through, and that is, you know, if you asked me 15, 20 years ago, hey, if we're going to build a new library, what should it look like? And I would be like, well, it should look like the surrounding neighborhood. And I would like beat that drum. And now, I feel differently 20 years to the future. So just don't tell them in the beginning, this building has to look like the houses on the street. Just an opinion. They're professionals, and if you look at their stuff, it's pretty amazing, they have the ability to blend old and new, as you said. And the only example I can give you that's recent is the Art Center downtown. Look how they put that small little addition on the back of the Art Center, and it doesn't look anything like the building, the old building. It's modern, but it looks really freaking cool. So let them do what they do, is my just word of advice, as I won't sit here anymore, and let them come up with a design. Because if you try to cram, because I know they're going to want to do open spaces, if you're going to try and cram open spaces into this like 1800s-looking building, it just might not work. And you're going to force them to create something that's really expensive, that at the end of the day, we can't afford. So let them do their job, let them come back, and just be open-minded about the fact that you might have a modern-looking building on Main Street, and I think that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just want, through you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the Building Committee and actually the Library Board for really sticking to this and recognizing that the project is bigger than just their little circle, but also it affects everybody in Southington. And when I went to one of the workshops that Kristi was doing, I was blown away by some of the statistics that she read that day. And so I just want to say congratulations. I think you've done a great job, worked very hard, worked hard with this council and with each other, and I look forward to seeing some amazing plans.
All right. So it is on the agenda tonight for action, so hopefully this will be step one forward for you, and then we'll go from there. So shortly, we'll be back for action.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my last item is I will be needing a brief executive session on real estate. There'll be no action taken after that executive session.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, we're moving on to the Town Attorney's Report, and as mentioned before by Mr. Boz, we're going to hear a little bit about the legal components of the tax relief ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really think Mrs. Morrissey and Chairman Boz did a great job explaining what the recommendations were, and I was just tasked with codifying those into three separate proposals, which went out last Thursday. Two of those proposals will be new ordinances entirely. One of the proposals is a proposed deletion and amendment to Section 375-4 of the Town Code, and that's with respect to the tax stabilization proposal for residents over the age of 70. And the only amendment there would be to change the income requirements over and above the state level by $7,000. So that's what I codified in that proposal. The two new ordinance proposals are pursuant to Connecticut State Statute 12-81. That's for completely disabled residents who are Social Security qualified. They currently have a $1,000 tax assessment exemption, so that's just $1,000 off the value that they're taxed on. So it's not $1,000 off their tax bill. So that is one of the new ordinances. The other new ordinance is for the $250 tax credit. So that would actually be a $250, up to a $250 savings per household for residents who qualify, based on income limits, that are over the age of 65. So those items pursuant to town charter, we will require a public hearing, so I'm requesting that be set tonight for a future meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for the Town Attorney?
I have one. Can you just verify that 37-4 to the original? Are those income limits correct, the 37 and the 32?
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
Because if you add 7 to that, so the red, their initial proposal that's in there, paragraph two...
So your question is, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
The 37 for married and 32 for single? Are those numbers, the correct numbers?
I think that was what was adopted at the time. So the way that I've written it now is to take the circuit breaker level, which is changed each year...
Yep.
And to just add $7,000 onto that.
To the circuit breaker limit.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the Town Attorney? And again, we'll be acting on this momentarily to set the public hearing, so we'll be seeking public input on this item. Okay. With that, we're moving on to public communication. This is a chance for any residents to come forward and speak. I'd ask you to start by stating your name and address for the record, and we just ask residents to limit their comments to five minutes. But with that, the microphone is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be right out of about five minutes.
Okay.
Lynn Dubey, 199 Main Street, representing the 32 members of IFF Local 2033. Here tonight to address concerns about statements made by members of the majority to Chief Butler at the September 9th Town Council Meeting. Councilman Poole spoke of his service that night and again tonight, and how hard they're working on the Recruitment Retention Committee, and I'm happy to see that. A point to consider is that while the town is working on recruiting members, I'm not sure we fully explored the root causes of why more volunteers don't join. Councilwoman Morrissey touched on one of those root causes, time. She acknowledged she doesn't have time to volunteer, nor do most residents. She asked if there are ways to change policies to accommodate more volunteers. That's being looked at. There really aren't many options, especially with regard to training. Until those root causes are acknowledged, the end result of these efforts will not change, and volunteer ranks will continue to decline. I have National Fire Academy classmates who are senior fire department leaders across the nation. Whether it is Connecticut, Pennsylvania, or Montana, the headlines are nearly identical. Volunteerism nationally is dropping across all genres. Ask yourself, how many 25-year-olds have joined the Elks last month? How often do our rec sports teams struggle to find enough coaches? This is not a simple problem. Councilwoman Misselli was clear that she continues to field calls from volunteers that are disgruntled. She read into the record part of a resignation letter, which included a statement against Chief Butler in this paragraph that she read. However, it was devoid of pertinent context. I've served alongside this member my entire career. He is a good person, who has my respect, and has given decades of service to this town. However, in the last few years, his responses have significantly declined, including before Chief Butler arrived. For example, in 2017, he responded to 63 calls, 9% of the times his company was dispatched. He arrived at the scene of only 1% of that year's calls, standing by and stationed for the remainder. 2018, he responded to 28 of 1,047 calls, only 3%. He made it to the scene 0.6% of the time. In 2019, he responded to a single call. In his letter, he stated he never met Chief Butler. I find that curious, given that there were no less than three formal meet-and-greet opportunities. All members are encouraged to stop by at any time, and Chief Butler is often in the firehouse seven days a week. His letter, reviewed in context, seems more about a dissatisfied volunteer taking a shot at the administration, rather than an actual concern that the administration is truly trying to, quote-unquote, "get rid of volunteers." Councilman Berry stated that he does not like, quote, "secret meetings," end quote. Fair enough. I am forced to wonder, however, of the several meetings council members Misselli and Berry have privately taken with a small group of disgruntled volunteers, why they did not follow up with the Chairman of the Fire Commission to discuss any concerns? Why have these disaffected members not followed the chain of command to address their issues? At the last Combined Officers' Meeting, Chief Butler asked the room no less than a dozen times, what are the issues within the department that needed to be addressed? Not a single volunteer officer raised an issue. The position of the local remains starkly defined. Our concern is there must be a sufficient number of firefighters, career and volunteer, responding in a timely manner to provide service. We work and train closely with the volunteer members on a daily basis, including as we speak. With the exception of the opinion of this small group of volunteer members, we believe there is no rift within the department. The reality is that these private meetings between council members and volunteers, secret or not, coupled with the lack of proper follow-up, has only served to perpetuate problems between the administration and this group of dissatisfied members, disrupting attempts to make us one department. I'd like to discuss mold. We did indeed have a mold problem in headquarters, as the pictures you received clearly show. There was nothing improper about the way mold was remediated or in the kitchen remodel itself. The kitchen, which is used for everything from cooking to training to meetings, is the most heavily-used room in the building, and it was 15 years old. It needed to be done. Councilman Berry's allegations that senior leadership of the department misused their authority or budget to address some phantom mold problem were baseless and... authority or budget to address some phantom mold problem were baseless and inflammatory. If his concern was truly as deep as he purports it to be, why no follow-up in June, July? Why wait until September? Was it so he could aggressively confront a department head on camera during an election cycle? I suspect the answer to that question is obvious to even the most casual observer. Furthermore, in response to a question from Councilman Ricchio, that Councilman Berry would publicly question Chief Butler's honesty, and that of his senior staff, was beyond the pale. It was completely without foundation, and beneath the dignity of the office. Fire department leadership stands ready at all times to accept oversight and tough questions. Councilman Berry stated clearly that the job of this council is to conduct oversight and ask those tough questions. The spectacle of September 9th was neither.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Haley Marquardt. You said, "State my address."
Yes, please.
26 Pokering Road, Plansville. So I'm here today on behalf of the FBI New Haven, sorry, Citizens Academy Alumni Association. It's a nonprofit organization, separate and apart from the FBI. And I have organized a fundraiser for human trafficking victims called Backpacks for Freedom. This event will be held at the Southington Drive-In Movie Theater on Sunday, October 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. I'm here to spread and raise awareness of this devastating travesty that's going on in communities surrounding us. So, essentially, what this event is for is to have members, not just in Southington, but all over Connecticut, come. Donate items such as, not new and unused items, such as toiletries, yoga pants, sweatpants, t-shirts, bras and underwear, slippers, socks, brushes, backpacks, pens, papers, towels, small stuffed animals, and also gift cards are welcome as well. And essentially, what we do is, we take these donated items, film it into backpacks, and we give them to victims who have been rescued in their current situation that they were found in. Ages range typically, victims are under 18 years old. And, I guess that is it. So what I'm asking is for you, with the voices that you have, to help spread the word for this event. And it would be great to see fellow Southington citizens to help support a great purpose and cause.
Haley, do you have a flyer made up for this?
Yes, I have a bunch of them.
If you can email us, I'd like to ask the Town Clerk if she can put that post it right on our website, so at least you get some notoriety there, and hopefully, we'll bring in some people for you. So, that's at least a start, and we'll try to spread the word as well.
Great, thank you so much. I have flyers here.
Take a copy.
Okay, yeah. These are all for you, so you can put them wherever you want.
Are you guys, are you guys a nonprofit?
Yes.
Okay. Got it, perfect.
So also listed, on the back of the flyer, is a little bit more of an explanation of what we do, why we do it, and how we do it. And there is a link to the GoFundMe page. But I do have a PDF file that I can email to you as well.
That would be great. If you want to get it to me, I can get it to the clerk, or you can email the clerk directly.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joanne Kelleher, 861 Savage Street in Southington. I am the Director of the Early Childhood Collaborative of Southington. So since I was here, I thought I would share some news from that. This week is National Car Seat Safety Week, and so I wanted to give a shout-out to the Southington Police Department, who sponsored a car seat safety check this past Saturday. It was held at the grounds of the Calendar House. And this is the fourth time that the ECCS and the Police Department have co-sponsored a free car seat event. A lot of parents and grandparents struggle with getting the car seats implemented safely into their vehicles, and making sure that the children are strapped in correctly. And the rules changed now two years ago, so children need to be in a car seat or booster seat until they are eight years old. And a lot of people, I could see, are surprised at that.
Little ones anymore.
Yeah, if you don't have little ones, you wouldn't know that the ages really went up. They have to be rear-facing until they're two. So, just a shout-out to the Police Department. They handled the actual checking. They worked with somebody from Yale, who was a car seat safety instructor, who was able to do an evaluation, and, you know, it was cross-training for them as well. And then the ECCS did the promotion to try and get people to attend. So, thank you to that department for doing it, once again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Any other residents that would like to speak? Last call, the microphone is open. Any other residents for public communication? Okay, then I will close public communication, and we'll move on for our action items. First is, under Old Business, Action on the Board of Finance Minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the Board of Finance Minutes?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the Board of Finance Minutes have passed. Next, we're looking to schedule a public hearing for the Tax Relief Committee. I would suggest Tuesday, October 15th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to schedule the public hearing for the Tax Relief Ordinance on October 15th, at the old Town Hall.
Right.
Original Town Hall.
Vintage Town Hall.
The only Town Hall.
This is the municipal center.
This is true.
That's the Town Hall.
All right, I think we've got it. The intent of your motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that passes. And, action on the library architect.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve the action on the library architect, as was presented by the committee this evening.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make that second, Mr. Chair.
And we have a second. Great, any other discussion?
No, just want to thank the Library Board and all the members. Good job. Thank you for all your work you're doing.
Glad to know it's TAP, Tappee, not TAP. Tappee.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to New Business, Tax Refunds. Councilman Dietzick.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds, as itemized in the Town Council packet.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the tax refunds. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And finally, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn into executive session, including the Town Manager and Town Attorney.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we are adjourned into executive session.